We have, I guess I am law. Could you get yours to go up?
Hey, hey.
What are we doing?
Oh, this hurts. Did you find a way?
We need a pillow for you.
I know. The little hobbit is sneaking.
Get a toilet lever and stand at the same time.
I think it came out of a toilet.
Now I'm up there, boys.
All right. Thank you. What does committee report say? Does this mean that I have signed all these?
Yes.
And I have to ask for anything? Do you need a motion?
No.
Just the fact that they signed. So let's recognition that these have been signed pursuant to what we decided a long time ago where I had to sign all these things. 7:15 we have a public hearing, so let's head into what we have. Tracy, you have a report?
Yep. The first thing I have for you is I'm bringing forward some names for the selection committee, for the owners project manager, and the architect. So that committee would have a very defined charge in that they will be creating both the RFQs for those two positions. They would be getting it advertised in central register. They would take resumes and packages for review. And they would have, they would set forth a set of criteria by which to judge all of the applications that come in. Then they would choose a number, I'm not sure how many, for interview. And then we recommend a finalist to the board. Once the OPM is on board, they would do the same thing for the architect. Obviously, when they're drafting the RFQs, they can be doing them both in concert, but it would follow a similar process. So for this evening, my recommendations for the board to consider...
And Tracy, let me just ask.
Yep.
Because part of the process that at least I'm thinking that I'm aware of, if we're working with this quasi-selection team, the design construct team, which would be of a much smaller number, will be something that we'll head into at another time when the OPM is in place and we've looked at maybe putting an architect in place?
Sure. When the OPM and the architect are chosen and are hired technically, at that point this committee could be disbanded and then the board would look to appoint a construction committee.
That would work in concert with the OPM?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's generally a much smaller committee. So this evening for your consideration, I brought forward appointment slips for the five members of the Board of Selectmen. Eric Spahn, who served as the chairman of the Municipal Building Committee. Martha Taylor, who also served on that committee. Michael, Chief Michael Riley. Deputy Chief John Lucy. Gentleman David Halliwell. John Keller. Otto Kinsell. Dick Pasari. And Mary Leary.
How many people?
That's a total of, I believe, fourteen. They have all expressed at some point during the last three years throughout the process a willingness to serve on the committee and all the relevant experience.
And we're not positive that if we vote to put all those folks on tonight or make a motion, that they're going to say yes anyway, right?
Right.
And so let me get understanding, so this is going to be the committee to hire the, to go up for the, yeah, to go up for the RFQ?
Owners project manager.
Yeah, and that, and then, and then once those people are in place, then we'll have to have another committee.
Building committee.
Right. That will help that. Now, is it going to be, the committee going to be split into two because there's two separate projects?
No, it's all going to be a single project.
Okay.
That was the whole idea of the same is maybe one PM and one design-construction.
Oh, yeah, no, that I understand, but I'm just thinking when it comes down to the nitty-gritty, maybe I'm looking too far ahead.
No, I think it's important, actually, you bring up a good point, that when you look to seat the construction committee, that you have someone from the police side, someone from the town hall side, someone with construction experience, someone with finance experience.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so hearing those names and do we need a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve all. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
What's that current number?
That would be fourteen with the list.
It seems like a huge committee.
It's good. And it's going to meet in public anyways, so we have no problem with the posters, no problem with me...
All have to be legally posted.
Right, but I'm saying as far as we go, all five of us coming at the same time, I'm not quite sure if we'll be able to...
We're allowed to attend posted meetings.
Right, that's what they need to do. But I'm not sure if we'll all be able to be at the RQ.
Well, we could go back to what we've done before too and where it's all, whether, you know, it's five members of the Board of Selectmen, we could choose, shoe, because it's a posted meeting, we can have three. So it didn't have to be the whole board too. It's either, and that would make it a little smaller, JR.
Fourteen's like a crazy round table.
Actually, it's just nine, but it's, we all see it. We want to look at it that way.
I have a feeling that Mary might not come in at this point. She thinks she wants to come in after the architects can write and all that stuff. She, her relevant experience is she's worked in a building project at Government's Academy, and she helped with the library here, and she avoids some pitfalls that happen. So I don't think she's relevant at this point, but she will be later. She may take a test. I think we can throw it out there and see if she says it. I mean, that's...
I really think we need to concentrate deeply on the OPM. That is going to make or break this whole project. There's no two ways about it. I think we need all hands on deck to choose that OPM, he or her. So, you know, think about that too.
Well, I think one of the advantages to a big group is that it's more people involved in getting buy-in for whoever we select. It's an open, more open process. There's more word about it. And there may be that the initial responses are weeded out by a smaller portion of the response. You may nominate two people to read everything rather than all fourteen reading, you know, all twenty submissions. Because there may be some submissions that are clearly non-starters. From my experience in selecting architects, sometimes they just don't want anything.
Mike, did you have something?
Yeah. How come citizens members of the building committee weren't considered to be on this committee?
I don't know if I can answer that. I don't think there was anything...
When they, when they asked for input, okay, I put my notice, I'd like to be on this building committee, not only because I got experience with it already, but I live across the street from it.
Yeah.
And like the neighborhood has used me as a sounding board as far as what they want, what they don't want, and it's like, so I would like to be on the committee.
Well, this committee now that we're discussing, that some of the names have been presented, will certainly, like I said before, not be probably the same names or maybe some, but maybe not all, that are on the design-build committee.
Why wouldn't they?
And I can tell, I will say this. The design-build committee will probably be registered architects and people with construction knowledge and maybe the police chief. So I doubt that unless you're hidden, I know you were a pharmacist, but unless you're hidden tremendous construction knowledge and a...
But I still think you should have citizens input on what happens.
Citizens input could be available all through the building process. Once the building process gets going and is underway, there'll be tremendous buy-in for the community as the designs get put out on, you know, boards and all the open meetings. When the design, when we start to build this, that committee will be meeting with the OPM and will be very busy and will be a very difficult committee.
But would he have an opportunity to sit on the committee the next committee? I'd say why not?
The design committee?
To build design. That's more of an oversight management.
Yeah, that's like, that's going to be, that's going to maybe be an Eric or a Martha this architect or something. It's going to be people that are in the building trace. Because they're now going after, and I know Mike has a concern because he's close to the building project, but it's going to be going after the best way to build the best building for the best use of the taxpayers' dollar.
Right.
So we're probably not going to want some real amateurs doing that.
No. I don't, I don't think, well, we have five citizens on this now, right?
That are not serving on the Board of Selectmen, yeah.
Or town employees.
Or town employees, yeah.
Um, and there's Eric, he's not, he's, he's a citizen too.
So like I said...
And then that, you can always come to the public meetings and you have input then too.
This committee here is to maybe move forward and establish who the town would like as the owners building manager, project manager. And then maybe look forward to choosing an architect.
But I had experience with that too when I was, what it's like when we did a minor project.
But choosing those has nothing to do with what's the actual outcome.
I just think if you have people that have already served a lot of time in this committee, to just deny, consider them at all is wrong. And I, and Steve Frams did the same thing. He wasn't reconsidered. It's like, I personally find it that if anyone disagrees with this board, it seems like you don't get reappointed anymore. Okay? And this is like, this isn't the first. Joe Story was another, and Ms. Greco was one that said to him, he didn't agree with the way the town was going. Okay? So he wasn't appointed to the rec committee. I think it's a setting a bad precedent. Period.
What did I say?
When, way back when Joe Story, it was said...
I mean, I also, I have people telling me that using the same people over and over again sets a bad precedent. So where, I mean, how do you...
Putting, I think putting all town employees on is a bad precedent.
Well, that's not happening.
Well, you've got, what, you've got selectmen, you've got, you've got town planner, you've got, you've got Pete, you've got the chief, okay. Granted, it's like, but you've got a lot of town people on this, on the board. Okay? I think you should have some citizens too, especially ones that are interested.
We're talking six.
I don't know, but like I said, we were on the committee already. We were on the committee already. It's like, I mean, like I said...
All right, Mike, duly noted. Thank you.
Okay. Where do we stand?
You have a motion, second.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I guess, given Mike's concern and I guess he's speaking for Steve Fram and the world, do we want to ask if more interest and potentially put on a few more people or do we want to...
I think we have a list of like, we have a list of bodies and the teams that, that six citizens.
But we know that people may not actually serve, so if people are interested, allow them that...
You know, I understood what Mike was saying and that's why I was passive. But unequivocally and for no reason of the fact that you didn't agree with things, because I can't remember when you didn't, but that committee was disbanded. And we moved forward with this committee, and I'm not even positive how some of the names, to be truthful with you, are there. Some of the names towards the tail end is because they're full of technical experience. If I had my way, Mike, I'd cut this committee down to a lot less instead of making it a lot bigger. Because we're trying to choose someone which is going to move the town forward, and that's the OPM. Someone that can communicate with construction and someone that can also communicate with...
7:15.
Okay, with this side of the board. So already, this committee is way over the size I wanted.
Any concern about having even number on the committee? It's usually not.
Well, let's, we'll take this up right after. We have a public hearing at 7:15 PM, and there's the reconsideration of a finding of a nuisance dangerous dog, Mass. General Law, 140, section 157. The dog is Izzy and it's owned by the Roses at 223 Middle Street. Dan, can you read the public notice?
Town of Newbury reconsidering a finding of nuisance slash dangerous dog under GL 140 and 157. Public hearing notice, residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, February 14, 2017, at 7:15 PM at 12 Kent Lane, Newbury, Mass., Newbury Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing in accordance with provisions of the MGL 140 and 157 regarding reconsideration of a finding of a nuisance slash dangerous dog dated May 6, 2014, which ordered as follows. Dog Izzy, owned by Doring Rose, 223 Middle Road, Newbury, at all times. When outside of house, dog Izzy must be under control of a body leash and Baskerville muzzle.
If you read some of the stuff that we have in our report, it seems like things have changed. Carol, you're here. Do you want to speak to us and maybe illuminate us so that I don't have to maybe read the whole report?
Okay. Basically, I tested the dog with my own dogs. I parked down the street. He came out with Izzy and I walked, he was on one side of the street, and I walked two of my dogs up the street on the opposite side. I was, I felt comfortable that he had the dog under control. I told him I was going to walk on his side on the opposite side, which I did. Dog was fine with it. He had full control of the dog. And I said, now I'm really going to test you because I'm going to squeeze in between you and the grass. I said, and my dog's going to be rubbing right up next to his dog. And he had full control of the dog. Izzy never tried to go after my dogs. I'm sticking my neck out, and I hope they realize this, but I really feel that he has good control of the dog. He has a better understanding, having the dog in training and him learning what to do. That I feel confident that they can walk the dog safely without a muzzle. And you've never heard me say that before.
Very good. I'm impressed.
Well, thank you, Carol. I was involved on the first motion, as you can read in some of the later stuff, so I'm really glad that things seem to work in, you know, the way that maybe they should. So I would entertain a motion and then we'll have some discussion.
Motion to lift the oath.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I think the recommendation was that the dog still be leash-walked rather than just released as a, as a lot of Newbury dogs are. So I think we need to make sure that it's collected in order. And I think congratulations are due for the training because it's a lot of work to change dog behavior and people behavior. So very pleased with the effort.
Any other discussion?
Well, thank you for taking the effort with the dog. Dog is a second chance.
She's a good girl.
Yeah, as long as she's leashed.
Yeah, always.
And Carol, thanks for your work through the whole process.
No problem.
All those in favor? All right, so back to the fact of...
Well, good luck.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
All of you there? Back to where we were.
Thank you, Carol.
We have a motion to proceed through the names that we have. With some of the discussion phase, what does the board want to do?
Well, I could see some value in going up to fifteen to get it to an odd number. And that would allow further interest if other people are feeling left out. But I understand the hesitation about adding more people to the board.
Wasn't there a number on committees and boards? I forget what it was, 13, 15?
Talk about, try to sort it out.
I forget what, there was a number that we could go up to and not exceed on boards and committees. And I forget what the...
I didn't see anything in the chat room.
Okay.
So what's the concern? It's an odd number?
It's an even number.
It's an even number?
Not an odd, not really, um...
So what do we have, fourteen people?
Actually, if you sit down and think about it, it is an odd number. There's nine on the committee with the Board of Selectmen sitting there, right? That makes it the odd number. So if you look at it that way, it is an odd number.
Well, it depends on whether or not we're voting members of this committee, which I think we would be all.
I don't think we are.
All of these members as presented to you this evening would have a full vote.
So it is an even.
They don't come to us and we don't have the final vote?
You can do it that way if you prefer.
Say it again.
You can, you can have a representative from the Board of Selectmen. You can have two, you can have the entire board serve.
And then they come, they do the work, and then they come to the board, and then we actually have the final vote.
Yep.
Well, that's what we discussed earlier, whether you want three selectmen, two selectmen, and then some on the board, so it might be good to have it.
We have two from the board that gives us a lower.
Yep. Which is the number that JR, this has kind of been thought of, there's been, you know, so the more and more we think about it, I have a tendency to think that, did you mention eleven?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think less is more.
I mean, I think that if you have two members from the Board of Selectmen and people you haven't placed...
See, my thought, excuse me, Jennifer, my thought is that, is that I don't think this committee can't vote. And I don't know, maybe I don't misunderstand the role of the Board of Selectmen. I, I didn't think that this committee could vote to go into contract. It had to be us.
They're not going to go into contract. They're going to make a recommendation.
To us.
To whom?
To us.
To us.
We're the ones, we have the final say.
You have the final say.
So it does, is there a...
Absolutely. That's why having the five, five members.
That's what I thought. So I don't, yeah, I don't see the necessity in having the whole board sitting there.
All right. I'm okay with that.
I mean, one, what about, I'll lock that one.
I'm interested in serving on the record.
Damon Jaa, why doesn't the number of people that we have approached or could approach reflect that reduction? And if there's any other discussion, let's have it, entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify where the names came from, from the people who are not part of the board? I wasn't clear on that.
They've been submitted to me, they submitted to me a letter of interest.
Individual people over the past...
Email over the past three years. Yep.
And then, just so I get it right, then the decision was made not to have people from the building committee that was just as all?
No, there are two people from the building.
Okay, who else, who else besides Eric?
Martha Taylor.
Oh, Martha.
Oh, and John Lucy.
I'm sorry. Okay. But those are all people that are working with the town? In terms of the individual people on the building committee, that, that, they're not on it, is that right?
Eric's an individual.
Eric.
Right. He's the chairman, right?
Yeah. So he's also a resident.
Yep.
And the scope of the committee is, and you can quote me, Jen, that Tracy refined in the beginning is the fact that we're trying to choose the most qualified OPM and design team. And if that means we're holding it a little close to the vest and afterwards happened in the last process, not throwing it wide open to every person in the town of Newbury having a say who we chose for the owners project manager, then that be said.
My goal is to have a functioning committee and move this, move this project forward.
And during this process, there will be tremendous public input for people to be able to, as the design unfolds, to see the direction we're going in. And there'll be opportunity for people to absolutely have some say in how it looks, how it goes, and where the, you know, it's just a process. We're beginning a process that's going to take three years.
You're anticipating like open forums and things like that?
Yeah. I'm anticipating this committee is going to full, is going to be up, and then I think it's going to go, and then there'll be another committee.
I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't...
Without other committee, just, I don't, I just want to push back because without other committee, you're saying is going to be people with expertise, right?
And it's not going to, it's not, this, this group has expertise, but the design group is probably going to be more technically involved with construction. I wasn't, I can't really remember the library, but Martha, can you remember the library? Who was here?
You know, I don't know, that was kind of before my time.
But I mean, I'm sure the round school and the library had meetings somewhere where people could review the design. I mean, Salisbury went through that process. It's just something that we intend to do.
This is not going to be held in secret or private.
Most OPMs will have forum.
Absolutely.
Dick Pasari was huge in the elementary school project.
Actually, on the library, he was great.
Yes.
But anyway, that's, that's the scope of where we're going. Tracy, can you, someone, because I'm a little confused, where are we? We are now with two members.
We have eleven members. J.R. Colby, Damon Jesperson, Eric Spahn, Martha Taylor, Michael Riley, John Lucy, David Halliwell, John Keller, Otto Kinsell, Dick Pasari, and Mary Leary.
And that's eleven people. And I would entertain a motion.
Motion to remove eleven.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor?
I was also going to ask you to consider the tree warden position. It's come to my attention that that is appearing on the ballot every year. I did some research into our charter to see why, I couldn't understand why it was just a one-year term. And there's nothing, it's silent there, so when I referred back to the general law, it allows the Board of Selectmen to set a term for one or more years. But nobody ever set a term that I could find in the research that town clerk looked. So I was going to ask you if you would consider making that a three-year term?
I think a three-year term certainly makes more sense than a one-year term.
We had, put it in motion.
Put it in motion.
I move that we make the tree warden a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
All right, before we, I forget what it was, last year or two years ago, we were going to make that an appointed position and give it to the highway department. Somehow that got tabled at that town meeting. We never revisited it, and I'm wondering if we should. I have big faith in James. He's always there helping the tree warden anyway. You know, he's an integral part of the whole thing. But I'm wondering if we should quiz James on this first and see if he is still interested in it and then maybe revisit that on the town floor. Because if I remember, it was all compiled together with the clam wardens, I'm sorry, fish commissioners, and the tree warden, and we're going to make them all appointed positions. And somehow that...
Well, I remember some of the discussion around that. I was opposed to making it part of the highway department because of, I guess because I work in that industry and I, and I talked to James and he had, well, he works with the tree warden, he said, you know, I don't know anything about trees. And, and so my feeling was that either keep it in an elected position or an appointed position but not part of the highway department was important, and that, that objection sort of stopped things, as I recall. And so we just sort of let the discussion go by.
All right, we could carry it one further. What's the budget for the tree warden now?
I want to say fifteen thousand.
Maybe add a few bucks to it and hire someone that is a tree person. And not only could he be doing the tree work for the highway, he could be like snowballing the lawn grass or something else. Oh, and because the highway needs more people. They, there were, how many do we have, nine or 10 now? And they were fourteen when we started cutting back with the budget cuts when I first got in. So just food for thought.
Yeah, moving, I mean, finding someone that has the expertise or finding the training that they could do to, to bring them up to snuff would be, but that's sort of a, I think that's a bigger discussion to look at what that job would actually look like.
Well, I think the current tree warden has plenty of...
He's a nursery guy.
Right.
Definitely guy.
I think in the past, the past couple of years, the tree warden, they think there was an arborist that has, had, had...
Yeah, Peter Hollis.
And I think Mr. Stromsky, wasn't he an arborist too?
Yeah, he, he ran last year as well.
So I think there is people... So I think there is people out there, I don't know, I'm hesitant to take elected positions.
Where people get so emotional about the trees and the look at the town, it almost seems like it should be one of us.
Independent.
Yeah, somebody in town, I mean.
I think that's also why, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think that's also why it goes to part of the planning board now too. Don't you have a review on what trees are cut down?
That's if it's, if they're on a scenic road, we don't actually have scenic road by what, by law. So that's, that's, you know, the, but the tree warden does have certain responsibilities under master general law. Not, not clear to me whether somebody in, say, the D P W could actually do those functions.
fulfill those strokes.
Well, that would certainly be something we'd wanna figure out before we change anything. I think we can still extend the term and then carry the discussion to, do we want to increase the responsibilities of this person?
The other thing too is maybe when we, well, it doesn't work either, as I say, maybe as an elected position, there are certain requirements to run for that elected position, but that usually is pretty hard to.
I mean, the responsibilities are big though in the statute, so. Well defined, but the term is just, it's kind of pumped, you have someone have to run for elected office every year.
Yeah, I, I'd like the idea of only for a three-year elected, keeping it an elected position.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
I also wanted to report to the board that we did receive a check from Warren Matur in around forty-four thousand two ninety-two oh four for the field remediation project that was received today.
Very good.
Also wanted to ask you if you would consider authorizing remote participation in meetings. It's something that Jimmy had provided, our town council had provided the guidelines to, that you would have to follow in order to be able to participate remotely. We considered it, but we never moved forward.
I remember voting again many years ago for the selectmen.
Uh, we talked about it, but I don't think we ever voted it, or it, when you voted, it's for all boards.
It was back with Chuck and Vinnie.
Oh, maybe before that.
So I think we should research that, while we, but that was just the board of selectmen doing that.
Okay.
Would laptop be able to, but.
You mean like conferencing?
It, it allows a, a member of a board to conference in and participate in the meeting. There are certain criteria that have to be met. But if you would consider adopting, it is nine forty C M R twenty-nine ten.
I assumed we already had it, because it's in the selectman's handbook, as far as one of the things that you can do.
Is it, is it audio, is it audio, are we going further than that?
You can do it via conference call, you can do it via, uh, other technology, video.
Video conferencing.
Yeah, like video on Skype, yeah.
Sure, sure. But it would just be a matter of devoting to allow it.
Yeah, I, I think if I remember the rule, you can converse with it, but you can't vote? There was something about that, and I forget what it was.
I think the ability, the ability to, you know, anticipate in a meeting, in a conference call is great, but if you're gonna do something like this, you gotta be able to vote.
Yeah, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it. Do we need to find out if we've already done it in the past, or should we just?
I can't find a record of it anywhere, so that's the, those are the rules.
Okay, alright.
And I did have another request from conservation commission that, that you would consider it.
So that would be for all boards?
Yeah.
When you first said it, I thought it was, because I had already assumed it was part of our.
So that means that, what would do, we're updating what that vote was, because if, if we did do the vote, as I remember, it was just a board selectman, it was not all boards, it would be updating.
Updating.
Yep.
And this would bring us into a court with master general law, so would we simply be adopting a M D L?
Uh, C M R.
C M R.
Yeah.
So, is there a motion?
She could read it right there.
I move that we, uh, the nine forty C M R twenty-nine ten of the open meeting law for remote participation.
Second of all.
Any discussion?
I think it makes it easier for people to be at meetings, it's a good thing.
Do you want me to read this? The following procedure must be followed when board members, do you wanna know what the sign up for?
Yeah.
So the following procedure must be followed when board members participate remotely. Any member of a public body who wishes to participate remotely shall, as soon as reasonably possible, prior to a meeting, notify the chair or, in the chair's absence, the person chairing the meeting of his or her desire to do so, and the reason for, and the facts supporting his or her request. At the start of the meeting, the chair shall announce the name of any member who will be participating remotely and the reason under nine forty C M R twenty-nine ten five for his or her remote participation. This information shall also be included in the meeting minutes. All votes taken during any meeting in which a member participates remotely shall be by roll call vote. Any member participating remotely may participate in an executive session, but shall state at the start of any such session that no other person is present and/or able to hear the discussion at the remote location unless the presence of that person is approved by a simple majority vote of the public body.
Can we amend that?
No, okay, this is part of the open meeting law.
Why would you want an open telephone line in an executive session?
Well, it says you have to say that nobody else is there. In line, so then it says, when feasible, the chair or the chair's absence, the person chairing the meeting shall distribute to remote participants in advance of the meeting copies of any documents or exhibits that he or she reasonably anticipates will be used during the meeting. If used during the meeting, such documents shall be part of the official record of the meeting and shall be listed in the meeting minutes and retained in accordance with the open meeting law.
Does that mean that if there isn't a quorum of a meeting, that if someone's participating?
You cannot be part of the quorum, the quorum has to be present.
That's, that's good to know, because that would have bothered them some.
So the following methods of remote participation are allowed: telephone, internet, satellite-enabled, or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables a remote participant and all persons present at the meeting location to be clearly audible to one another. You don't have to see them, you have to be able to hear them. And then the only, the only remote stays allowed with physical attendance is made unreasonably difficult due to one or more of the following: personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, or geographic distance.
Yeah, it's funny, because I thought this was already in place, because I nearly had to work on the far side of the country for a while, I thought, oh, I'll be.
I think what we've done before, and I don't know if we've done it before, but it seems to me I can remember, that was a funny way of saying nothing, but, can a meeting at this level, at this stage, vote to include someone remotely by a motion of that board? Because it seems to me we've done that before somewhere, and that's, I think, what almost Chuck has remembered. Because if we have the ability to, under master general law, vote to include a member of the board in the process of the meeting, it almost makes that not that relevant.
Well, I think this is, this is the law that allows you to do it. You have to vote to accept this in order to do it, otherwise it's not.
Is it possible now for a board to vote to include someone in the conference?
No. So this, this will, but I think what this will help with is, Martha, I think you know what I'm going with. When somebody is, like, when somebody's not present at a meeting, and then you can watch it on T V, and you can still, or does that still?
You can, we have that already, that's the law.
Right, that is, but that's, that's different.
That's not participating in the meeting.
So, but if somebody was sick and they were home and they couldn't make, make the meeting, they could conference in and participate, just, just physically can't make it.
You couldn't get around me?
So, I mean, I think it will help that, I mean, that other law will still be there, because you have to be able to watch it.
Could we, could we draft our own bylaw that cleans that up a little bit? I just can't imagine having an open telephone line in an executive session, if you're dealing with litigation or things of that nature. I mean, in a lot of ways, this certainly has its advantages. It also, if this person has the ability to vote and could vote on very important things, which could be important in its own right, but that person isn't able to always be able to see or feel the energy in the room, but I suppose now, because we're televised, they can. So maybe it is time to maybe look at this as, as a viable vehicle, that we've reached this level.
Yeah, with the current technologies.
Before, before that, it would be, you know, before you couldn't really physically see or be involved in the room.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll write the book.
What's on the table, Ellen, do we have a?
I thought we moved to accept most.
We moved to accept the nine forty C M R twenty-nine ten, Chuck seconded it, and then the rules, that's it.
Now, do you mind having a discussion?
All those in favor? Thank you for helping me.
The meeting guys.
Okay, I also have a request from the D P W to, um, to clear nineteen ninety-seven Ford L eight thousand surplus.
What the heck is that?
Yeah, motion to the class of.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
That was easy.
Finally, the conservation commission is seeking new members, so anyone who's interested in serving is asked to send a letter of interest to the chairman Doug Packer, which introduces him, makes an amendment, send it forward.
Alright, thanks Tracy. We have a request for public use. This is gonna be with a special permit process, and it is for Great Bay Tai Chi, Tai Chi at nine, North Payne Street, Ipswich, Mass, and they want use of the Newbury Fire Department firefighter's memorial hall for classes on Fridays from two, from February third seventeen through December twenty-second of seventeen. I would entertain a motion and then we'll have discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
So, because we own the firewall now, we approve all of these.
Exactly so.
And I guess the, the first question is, will this in any way impact the fire department's functioning there?
No, they're currently, this is a, a group that's been doing this for quite some time.
Been functioning there for some time, so no impediment.
And I think the idea is to maybe not renew any of the requests for the high-impact things, right Tracy? So, the things that would really, you know, interfere with the pack a lot of things, so, just a small use, minimal use, request. All those in favor? We've already talked about the committee. We have before us a resignation of John O'Connell from the planning board, and a letter from Josh Moss as acting chair of the planning board, so, I think that we really can miss, John will be a tremendous loss and tremendous, he had an awful lot in the town, and we need to have a letter for acknowledging his service.
Thank you, you beat me for it.
Now, this is already done, so they're not looking for anything from us beyond that, right Tracy?
We have to vote to accept the letter of resignation.
Is that what I'm wondering about? Do we need to vote? No, his board, his board voted to accept his resignation, right?
Well, he, he's, I think John's resignation is what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Yeah, John does do an awful lot from stormwater to the planning board to engineering, forest, I mean, man, he's, he's really gone the extra mile for us, so.
So, appointments to the planning board is followed. Pete Pecus to fill the vacancy of John O'Connell. That would entertain a motion, or is that a motion?
So, motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Pete's here, if you want to pass it.
Oh, hi, thank you.
You're, you're in.
Thank you.
Jim Robinson, is he here?
He's, he's not here.
Alright, that would be the person that would be appointed to the planning board, I mean, the conservation commission from the planning board.
Yeah, that's the planning board member, yeah.
Yep.
Is he a liaison, or is he a full member?
No, he's a full member, he's a full member. So that, that actually raises a question about John O'Connell's position, because he's been a planning board member of the conservation commission, so.
One more happy war.
Right, no, I think he wants to continue on the commission, so that will have to be a separate conversation.
Alright.
So he may have to be appointed separately to conservation commission?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
The, um, planning board member on the conservation commission, that's what I served when I was on the planning board, and it is a viable conduit, because there's so much that they do together, so, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Rachel McManus, hi.
Hi.
And it's a motion to, um, put Rachel on the planning board as an associate member?
Yes, take please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Rachel's my, my neighbor, so it's great. Review and approve and sign. Business license renewals is followed. I'm gonna just go through them, if you wanna hold one, and we'll make a motion at the end. Seco Cycle, Roots to Wings, Willie P. Classics, Home Island Bicycle Rental, Jayden Auto, J R M Harling and Recycling Services, Ampit.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on any of those? All those in favor?
Wait a minute, I, this one I have, I just, I don't wanna hold up the vote, but I do, did get one email from a resident that was concerned with, um, and I'm just bringing it to the board. It said that, um, I was looking at the selectmen's schedule for the upcoming meeting on February fourteenth and seeing that J R M is asking to renew their business license. Their company is on one, um, this is, is a disgrace. It looks abandoned with various truck carts and junk, and gives a poor introduction to Newbury as you drive down south from Newburyport. Uh, I would recommend holding up the issuance of their business license until they comply with the cleanup. When I attended a master plan meeting, there was much discussion about cleaning up some of the area businesses. Thank you, and the other selectmen, for all the work you do on Abbey Town. So, I don't know if there's anything we can do, I don't know. I just want to make note that it was brought to my attention, brought to the board's attention, I don't know if we can send them an email asking them to clean it up.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything terribly offensive there. It's kind of one of the places I peek in when I ride by. I mean, it's been in a, it's been a long transition from a junkyard into a commercial pro, you know, more of a commercial property, but, um, as far as the junks and stuff, I don't think there's much out there anymore.
I mean, it's not the prettiest.
No, I need some paint, I need some weed whacking, but, I don't know.
It is a junkyard.
Right, yeah. I mean, we could, I don't think we should hold up their business license, but we could send them a letter asking them to consider renovations and improvements to the property as it is, the, one of the entries into the town.
Don't they took a beautification, come here.
I don't know, I just.
Is it Sam's position that would be the code enforcement position for something like that?
I did ask him to look at it.
Yeah, I think this.
And sometimes with the rubbish of the border health, it's actually go in, I think twice that I remember, though, anyway.
So maybe just having Sam take a peek at that, and, but probably at this time, that would be all we need to do and see what happens after that, so I would entertain the motion again, and.
I'll have a discussion.
Okay, good, so, all those in favor?
Hi.
New business license for storage, that's the new self-storage, and it is a new business license, so I would also entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Before we do that, I'm hoping that everything's all settled, that with the planning board thing, was there some issues or problems?
No, no issues, I mean, he's, he's been, he's been great, site plan review. He's still, he's, he's finished, or finishing up phase one, I think he's, I believe, two-thirds to three-quarters ready already. There is a second phase planning.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, so thank you for that, okay.
I think we just had a ribbon cutting last week. And he just had a ribbon cutted last week.
Wow. Um, tax agreement?
We're gonna vote on that one.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, once again, all those in favor?
Hi.
Told you guys I was tired tonight. Tracy, we're looking for a motion to accept the tax agreement, and we've had discussion on this between Borrego Solar...
You've already approved it. It just needs to be executed this evening.
Motion to sign the tax document.
Is there a second?
Uh, yes, I can absolutely...
Is there discussion?
You look confused, Chuck. So we approved this back when we did the solar planning, when we still did solar planning before we gave it to the planning board. This was the tax agreement that we, that mostly Tracy came up with.
Yep.
We read it, agreed with it. I think three of us were the people who were on the board at that point.
Yeah.
Um, but it was part of that initial solar agreement for Middle Road. And so now it's just, we just have to sign it so we can start getting paid.
All right.
Just a bit before you guys close, Zach Parkis, I'm the project developer with Borrego for, um, for the solar project. There was one small change to the contract. Uh, we met with the landowner, getting it signed. They added a sentence that essentially clarified some potentially ambiguous kind of thoughts, so I can get into that or we can not.
Why don't you clarify?
Thank you.
Is that in the, the agreement that we have, or is that new?
It was literally, so we, we were kinda running around trying to get all the signatures from Mr. Bashaw today, and his attorney asked to put in one sentence here, and I will read it, um. It says, "Developer shall immediately notify the town in writing in the event of any such discontinuance of its leasehold interest, following which the developer shall remove the equipment associated with the project from the property in accordance with the terms of the lease between the developer and the property owner, and all payments under the agreement shall cease." So, basically, the, the scenario that this contemplates is if there is a force majeure event where the project is rebooted, then the pilot essentially, there's no more property there to be taxed. And the ambiguity that the lawyer was concerned about is if the project, if there was a force majeure event, that there was nothing clearly that said that pilot wouldn't continue. And in the scenario of the landowner, it would default to him. So Mr. Bashaw, in a kind of doomsday conservative scenario reading of this paragraph, thought that they might be obligated to make the payments if the project blew up or something like that.
Has he executed?
He has, they asked, they inserted this.
And Borrego has?
And Borrego has agreed to it.
We have to have town council look at it.
I would recommend that if you wanna vote to approve a pending town council's review and acceptance or something like that, that's fine.
Well, can you, can you give me an example of what a force majeure just might look like?
A tornado comes through, um, and there are those provisions in the pilot now that essentially says if there is no personal property there, if there is no solar project to be taxed, the pilot essentially goes away, so the...
So are you just talking about natural events, or are you talking about physically taking, like, well, let's just, let's just say...
That's a war.
Yeah, yeah, but let's just say, let's just say the tax incentives go away for these types of projects, and, uh, Borrego Solar decides to pull this, pull their stuff away because it's no longer financially feasible for them to, to do it? Would that, would that be considered a force majeure?
No, that's a changed law provision. Um, we don't have to...
Separate provision in that article for bankruptcy.
Yep, and so bankruptcy, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear, but...
No, I know I'm talking about bankruptcy. I'm talking about no longer financially feasible.
That's basically what they would do, so...
No, that's not bankruptcy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer, so, but...
Okay, I think we amend the motion to approve on condition that town council reviews and approves the change.
I think we should have town council review it, and then pick it up. We're not lawyers.
That's what I would do.
Either way, I'm fine. What, what would the board like to do?
And we're talking about the taxes from this thing. It's the same as we're gonna get from one nice home in this town. That's all we get out of it, so I think we'd be prudent to have town council review it. You know, it's not like we're missing out on all kinds of money.
All right, someone make a motion, uh, to amend, and we will discuss that motion and see where it stands. So make a motion to amend.
I move that we table signing of the tax agreement with Bashaw Solar until town council has approved the changes.
How about review the changes? That's our approval.
If she reviews them, she's gonna have to approve them, or we're not gonna wanna vote for this.
Yep.
So...
And I wouldn't approve anything without town council looking at it.
Yes.
It's lawyer language.
Just, no, she did review it.
But not the new things that were added to it.
I didn't know there was a change this...
Right, yeah. I thought, I read the agreement.
All right, make a, let David make a motion, and then if we wanna throw that motion out, we will make a motion.
Okay. Um, so yeah, uh, that town council review it, and provided that she approves the changes, we can sign it.
Yeah, conditions of, to prove, is there a second?
I'll second.
Now we can have the discussion, whether we're gonna make another amendment or what we wanna do. Discussion.
I think it's proved to wait at least till our next meeting to get clarification from the lawyers, and the lawyer, the lawyers can give me clarification before we make this decision.
I agree with Tracy.
Just 'cause it was last, you know, it's last-minute changes, that's...
Yeah, that's why I brought it up before we closed it.
And I appreciate that.
It happened literally an hour ago when we were scrambling around to get the landowner's signature, and Martha and I just found out too, we didn't even need landowner signatures.
Wow. Not good. Tracy, wait, you want?
Yeah, I, I, we execute this until it's approved.
So, if we stay where we stand, we're, we're pretty split down the middle, so I would probably, I don't know what procedure would be right at this point, but let's take a motion to overturn the amendment we have on the table?
Motion to overturn?
Or do you wanna vote it?
I think we should vote down the motion to sign.
All right, good. All right, let's have, let's, all those in favor of the motion to sign on the conditions that town council looks at?
That wasn't what I was saying. So, I think we, I put a motion to ours to sign it, and then we found out that it has been changed. So I think we need to vote not to sign the document today.
Which I understand, but you made a motion.
And then the amendment...
You made a motion to have town council look at it.
Ellen, can you read it, whatever, yeah.
Sorry. David made a motion to table the signing of the agreement until town council has reviewed and approved the changes.
Good, all right. I think we can table, so, all those in favor?
Was there a second? Did somebody second it?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, old business.
Can I get on the agenda for the next meeting today, or should I just work with, uh...
Yeah, we can put two of them.
Awesome. Thanks very much.
Two weeks.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Nice.
All right, old business.
That's good, bud.
Citizens' concerns, are there any? Correspondence, um, Massport. Chuck, do you wanna take and tell us what that's all about? Does you like the bridges?
Um, I don't think this was the letter for the bridges. No.
What was this one, Tracy?
I don't know.
Yeah, this is the National Bridge Inspector Standards for the, uh, reading and posting for the Main Street Parker River Bridge, and as I understand it, uh, they have decided that we don't need to post it at this time.
Yes, that was, I remember reading that.
All right.
So the way, the way I understand it, and someone else correct me if I'm wrong, the bridge does not need a reduced weight posting.
Right, it needs the side railings and the outer face redone.
But as far as weight concerns, then it's still...
That is, they said it was overbuilt when it was built.
That's good, I guess.
Yes.
Well, but, but they do recommend and advise and recommend that this structure be placed in a program for rehabilitation or replacement, so that being due in the way.
We're on our way.
We're on our way, so, sorry, I was slow on the update.
That's right, I figured that was something you wanted to, um, and a letter from Comcast. I don't know if anyone else read it any different, but I looked at it like it was giving them the ability to, um, photograph out on how many, um, complaints of that. And I don't know if that makes me warm and buttery, but there it is. That's communication that can be read. Any comment from anyone on that?
I think they probably should have all the complaints that they get posted. Not a minute just coming from us every time.
There aren't that many complaints there, though. Believe it or not.
Look at the wire running along the ground, am I got?
Okay, um, then we had a letter from the U S Department of Commerce, U S Census Bureau, and I think this is basically, um, as I read that, I wasn't sure if this was something that we received every year. And as for this, what did other folks get out of this?
Uh, I haven't seen it before, so I don't think we're getting it, got it every year, but it seems like they're...
Updating boundaries and...
Trying to update the systems that are used and, and trying to give us access to those systems. Um, I don't know who in town, the most appropriate person to deal with it, so...
Can I interject?
Sure.
So I went online to these links, and what is, it's asking is for an update of the highest elected official and their contact information, so I went ahead and updated your contact information check.
And what else? Was there anything on the back page that, on that second one? And that was the census survey? Are they looking to see how much of that's been completed or anything?
Well, it said here in the letter that the, um, your state or county representative is collaborating with the Census Bureau to consolidate responses to the V A S, so I think that...
That's right, gentlemen down here.
And then if there's any questions, they contact you or any reports that come to you.
So we seem to be doing really well.
Have we not heard from them?
Oh. Uh, we have meeting minutes, so, motion on January tenth.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
January twenty-fourth, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve is written. Okay.
Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I have it.
Warren, motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Hi. Uh, any meeting updates?
Um, I, wait a minute, I have a little meeting update for the district communication meeting at Triton. You guys got emailed that, that, um... What do you mean, call it, the thing that you emailed out? Did Frank, who asked you to email that to us? Was it, oh, Ellen? Who asked Ellen to? Did you email out, or was it?
Ellen, I got it from, I'm sorry.
About the Triton, the Triton, um, budget, the budget, um...
Oh, I sent it to you.
The comparison sheet?
Did Frank, did Frank ask you to send it, is that...
Gene.
Oh, Gene did, okay. So the finance committee, um, we have in the district communication meeting, it's this Thursday night, and I told the school committee that I would come back to them with a little more, um, clarification from this board about whether or not we want to look at any, um, changes that could be made to the way the agreement is, uh, the regional agreement is dispersed between the three towns, and if we would look at it, and it would have to be, it would have to benefit the town of Newbury before we would agree to any of that. So they just want to know if we would be willing to look at alternative sections, alternative ways of funding it. Not, not go with one way or another. I'm not saying one way is good. I'm not saying it's the operating, I'm not saying it's the capital. They just wanna open up the dialogue, and I think it's a good idea. I think it can benefit the town.
I'll look at it anyway.
Yeah, I'm happy to look. I don't see any way that they're gonna find a much better system. I mean, we have to pay the bill no matter what, so it's gonna be split between the three towns.
Right, and it may not change.
No town is gonna agree to anything that unduly burdens them.
Right.
So I'm happy to look at stuff, but I, I can't imagine, unless, you know, we find a way that it makes the federal government pay for some of it, or the state, that it's gonna benefit us.
Well, we won't know if we don't look.
Yeah, I said happy to look.
It may, it's, we don't get too excited that we're gonna change anything, 'cause chances are we're probably not. 'Cause the two-set method is the way, is the way that we will always fall back to, so even if we decide on something, and then we vote.
Any town can force it back to the old way, correct?
Yes.
If they're not happy with the way things are going, that's the, that's the rule. Yes.
All right.
But I think it behooves us not to look.
Yep, to look.
So I think if we don't look...
That could be a disaster.
This has been a tough night, guys. All around. All right, so, any other meeting updates? I had, uh, the Sandy Coffee Clutch, I had a couple of residents at that. We discussed certain things. Old Broadway has some flooding issues and they've newly noted, and other than that, any other meeting updates? Uh, executive session? Do we have an excessive session that you have to read?
I move we enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will not be reconveniencing at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote. Chairman Walker?
Uh, yes.
Selectman Bear?
Yes.
Selectman Desperson, yes. Selectman Kobe?
Yes.
Selectman McCrake?
Yeah.